Regular meeting of the Minnehaw County Planning Commission will make a few introductory comments, some of which you've heard before. As a courtesy tonight, everyone here, please make sure your cellphones are turned off. Any final action taken on the conditional use permit applications tonight will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of the Planning Commission's decision is filed with the Planning Office by Monday, October 31st at 5:00 P.M. In the event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the County Commission for a hearing on Tuesday, November 22nd, at or after 9:00 A.M. Meetings of the County Commission are held in this room. At this time, the Planning Commission will consider the consent agenda. The minutes from the September 26th meeting are included on the consent agenda. Are there any objections from the Planning Commission members on any item on the consent And next, I will read each item on the consent agenda. If any member of the audience objects to the item, please raise your hand and the item will be moved to the regular agenda to allow you to address the commission later in the meeting. Okay, is there a motion, let's see, to approve? First, I gotta read everything on the consent agenda. Okay, first is the minutes from September 26th. Item number two is a conditional use permit, number 1670. And before I read this, if you had a, you paid fifty dollars to rent a sign from the county to place on your property requesting a changing of venue, please make sure you bring those signs back and get your fifty dollars back because this county does run short of those signs from time to time, so. Okay, conditional use permit number 1670 to exceed 1,200 square feet of total accessory building requesting 1,944. And this is the petitioner's Lance Richter, is located at 25679 475th Avenue, approximately four miles west of, north of Sioux Falls. Okay, next, item number three, conditional use permit number 1672 to transfer one building eligibility. And this is petitioner's Dennis Muckell, and it's approximately one-half mile east of 463rd Avenue and 261st Avenue. Okay, item number four, conditional use permit number 1673 to allow Class 1 major home occupation, fish house construction. Marvin Sharky is a petitioner, is located at 48190 268th Avenue, approximately two miles west of Sioux Falls.
East.
East, excuse me, east. Okay, no one's objecting to that one. Item number five, conditional use permit number 1675 to exceed 1,200 square feet of total accessory building requesting 4,881. And this is a petitioner's Tom Richard, it's at 26420 485th Avenue, approximately two and a half miles southeast of Brandon. Okay, item number six, conditional use permit 1676 to exceed 1,200 square feet of total accessory building requesting 3114. And this is petitioner's Greg Stanton, and it's at 26793 467th Avenue, approximately two miles west of Sioux Falls. Okay, saying no objections, we'll move to item number seven, conditional use permit number 1677 to exceed 1,200 square feet of accessory building requesting 7,210. Petitioner's Dial Groves is located at 25758 472nd Avenue, approximately 2.5 miles north of Sioux Falls. Okay, and that concludes the consent agenda items. We will need a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The consent agenda is approved. If your item was on the consent agenda, you are free to go, your item has been approved. And thank you, and please return your signs to the office. Hey, she even brought it with her, all right. I was wondering what they looked like.
Cleansing with the grass.
Cool. We will move to the regular agenda. Item eight has been deferred to January 23rd, so that gives us item nine.
We'll need a motion for the.
Oh, we need a motion for item number eight to be deferred to January 23rd.
So moved.
A motion and a second for it to defer till 23rd. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Deferred to the 23rd of January 2017. And now we get to item nine, conditional use permit to allow sand and gravel extraction. This is the petitioner's Great Bear Sand and Gravel, location is at 46645 261st Avenue, approximately three miles southeast of Hartford. Yes, Scott Anderson.
Scott Anderson, Planning Director, and this is a request for conditional use permit 1671 to allow a sand and gravel extraction on property that is located near the intersection of 261st and 467th, I believe, 466th. And you may recall, some of you that have been on the commission a while, that back in 2006, we approved a conditional use permit 06-82 to allow this use to start and to occur on this property. And at that time, it was approved with 19 conditions. You may recall, this was dust at depth, and it was appealed by the, many of the neighbors, and this went to the County Commission. And at that County Commission meeting on August, well, let's see, at the meeting then, they added a condition, at the Planning Commission, that, that the, about a quarter mile of heart, of the highway of 466th Avenue be paved where it meets Highway 38, basically down to the haul road of the gravel pit. You will also notice that as one of the conditions, number 15, in the original conditional use permit, indicated that all mining activities shall conclude by January 1st of 2017, and that the reclamation be complete by December 31st of 2017. The applicant would like to continue mining that property, and so January 1st, 2017, is basically a couple months away, and they would like to continue mining. It's been 11 years since that conditional use permit has been approved, and there have been several problems and complaints that I've received in my office, primarily dealing with the condition of 466th. It has suffered from alligatoring and blowouts, and I've had many calls from the Hartford Township complaining about the condition of the road. It has required me to, or my staff, to do code enforcement several times, asking them to pay attention to the article, or to the condition that required the paving. And in, in addition to the, the road issue, I have had several calls about dust and, and whether I was going to monitor as the conditions allow the dust, and it, it did not appear to me, I went out several times, this has been over the past 11 years, but I did go out, it did not look like there was an issue with the dust, so I'd never ordered the dust monitoring equipment, which is very expensive and rather scientific to measure the particulates in the air over a 24-hour period. That being said, as you are aware, the, now the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow this grant, this activity to continue. So as part of our review of a conditional use permit, there are several criteria that we look at. We look at the, what the use would be on the, on the uses that are already in the area and on the property values. Given the large amount of property that's being used for sand and gravel, there's, and the sparse population, it's likely that, in my opinion, there's a neutral impact on the use and enjoyment of the surrounding properties. Over the past 10 years, we have not seen property values decrease in this area, which I would believe would point out to the fact that it has not had a significant impact on the property values. Number two, has there been any impacts on normal and orderly development and improvements of the surrounding vacant properties or uses predominant in the area? There has been very limited development of the surrounding vacant properties. We have seen a cement manufacturing facility be constructed within the last three years directly north of the subject property. The, the primary use of the vacant property in the area, or the, the open property is for agricultural purposes, and that has continued. The, so the agricultural uses have not been impeded by this proposed, by the use. Number three, are there utilities, access roads, and drainage that have been provided? The applicant did construct a haul road that intersects with 466th, and all, and all other utilities for the operation of this business are in place and have been provided. Four, off-street parking, the applicant meets all of the off-street parking and loading requirements. Number five, have measures been taken to control offensive odors, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, lighting, so that none of these would constitute a nuisance? The original conditional use permit 16-15 did have provisions to control dust and noise. The proposed use would have some limited noise and vibrations. The most serious issue for the proposed use is dust. And as I indicated in my, in my introduction, I have received several complaints about dust in 2009 and 2010 emanating from the subject property. These always occurred in the summer months when we were experiencing prolonged dry spells, and we would get very brisk or, you know, strong winds from the south. At that time, then, there was dust that was coming off that, that, off some of the gravel piles. And then finally, you are to look at the health, safety, general welfare of the public, and the comprehensive plan. Goal five of the comprehensive plan of the Environmental Stewardship Chapter of the Envision 2035 Plan states that we should recognize that sand and gravel deposits within the county are an un-renewable natural resource and beneficial to the economy of the county and the welfare of its people. The Envision 2035 Plan then has an action statement that suggests that conflicts with existing neighborhoods should be minimized. The applicant has had 10 years of mining sand and gravel from the site. There was strong opposition to this proposed use when the conditional use permit was approved in 2006. Staff included a sunset clause in the original approval so that the surrounding property owners would have some assurance that the operation would be, would have a limited scope, would be a limited operation, and that the site would be restored. Staff believes that 10 years has been a sufficient amount of time for the extraction of the sand and gravel to occur, and therefore does not support the continued sand and gravel extraction at this site. Should the Planning Commission choose to approve the conditional use permit to continue the sand and gravel extraction at this site, staff would recommend that you strengthen the language of the conditions dealing with the portion of 466 that is paved. The perpetual poor road condition of this road, of 466, is a perennial code issue, a code enforcement for the Planning Department. And so I would like to at least put that thought out there, that if you do choose to approve this, that we somehow address the road condition of that paved surface. And, you know, part of the issue is you're taking a gravel road and you put pavement on it, and I don't know if it really was ever constructed to really, had the base course to really hold the asphalt, and so that's part of the issue that we're facing, and so I'm not sure how one would best address maintaining that road if, if this should go forward. I do have some pictures, some slides, and I'll go through those, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you have. So this is about 200 acres, and it's shown in the red area, and the, the, the primary gravel operation is basically right in here. And you can see that on the air photo, it's, it's right in here. And this, this is the haul road as it comes out, and it meets 466th. This is the portion of 466 that's paved, that goes up to Highway 38. This is the haul road as you're looking, basically at the intersection of 466, looking east into the gravel pit area. The gravel pit areas, or the sand and gravel extraction is occurring over in this area. They don't mine the entire 200, 200 acres, it's a smaller area. Now I'm on 467th, which is on top of the hill by Songbird Acres. This gives you a good view down into the property. You can see the sand and gravel extractions occurring right in here. You can also see the haul road as it goes out, and it meets 466th right here that goes up to, to the highway. Once again, I'm on top of the hill looking down to the west, looking down into the gravel pit area. This is the neighbor to the north, which is the new cement manufacturing company. This is the haul road. And I did take a couple pictures of the road of 466 to show you that some of the issues that we're dealing with. And they do have an agreement with, this, this road is, splits Benton Township and Hartford Township, and Hartford Township is responsible for the maintenance of the road. As part of the requirements for notification, when you, when a conditional use permit for a sand and gravel operation is submitted, or any kind of mining operation, there's, it triggers a letter that, the Planning Department, that I am required to send out, and I send them out to the closest, everyone within one mile or the, or 25 people, whichever is leased. And in this case, I sent out approximately 43 letters, which covered approximately half a mile around most of the property. I also contacted both Benton Township and Hartford Township and made them aware that this request was being considered because I knew that, especially Hartford Township, had contacted me several times about the condition of the road. This is part of the issue that I have with the road. You can also see that other people use the road, they were combining soybeans, and right here's the, one of the farm implement, or farm machinery that was going down the road to Highway 38. But this is basically at the haul road looking north towards the highway, you can see Goose RV's establishment up here, but you can see the condition of the road. And what happens is with freeze and thaw in the spring, you really get, the road really deteriorates. So I'd be glad, I'll send it back, I'll take it back to the overview of the slide here. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Questions for Scott?
Scott, so at this point, no other trucking groups are using that same haul road, right? Just this gravel pit is using it?
Also, the, the cement, the cement manufacturing company uses a portion of it.
Okay.
And then also the general public.
Is there, and it's probably a question for the petitioner, but according to your pictures, it doesn't look like any reclamation has been done at all.
No, I don't believe there has been, but that, you could ask that to the, to the petitioner, but it did not appear that any reclamation had been done. But they have all of next year to reclaim it. The way the condition is written, the, all the mining activity is to conclude by January 1st of next year, so in a couple months, and then they have all of 2017 to reclaim that property.
The letter we received today that you had forwarded us from Wall Lake Township, do you feel that, and I mean, I saw the condition of the road, and I understand it's their jurisdiction, and apparently they have tried to contact whoever is in charge there to possibly do something with the roadway, but it doesn't look like, to me, like anything's been done.
Well, I think that, I, I did, I had a chance to talk to Paul Nelson, the, the Wall Lake Township, one of the township supervisors. He was talking about any damage done to his roads in their township, because it's only a couple miles away, and he said that they've been very good about going and looking at any issues that they've had from truck traffic, from gravel traffic going south, and then you get into the Wall Lake Township when you leave the site and start going south.
Okay, any other questions for Scott? We'll bring the petitioner up. Okay, thank you, petitioner here. Please come forward, state your name and address.
My name's Harold Gaden, I live at 3501 River Bluff Road, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. I'm the owner of Great Bear Sand and Gravel, I'm the one applying for the additional time. I took on over the pit for the Reynolds and Gustafson's in 2012, and the, the places hadn't much done for maintenance or anything when we took over. And since 2013, we've repaired the road every year, including this year, we just finished last, this week, on repairing all the potholes in the road and all the deal. We tried to do it in the fall prior for snow removals so that it doesn't break up throughout the winter and stuff, but you know, during the summer, we have many, many trucks going down through there the last couple of years. And you know, throughout the end, by the end of the summer, it gets broke up some, we've been going in every fall and repairing the patches. I didn't have all the details when I first took over the pit in 2013, and then we got a call on the road from this gentleman, and we did go fix it in 2014, and Wayne gave me a list of all the regulations on the pit. The, the previous guy that was running the pit had gone broke, and I, I stepped in and took over taking care of the pit for the Reynolds. Since we've taken over the pit, we have reclaimed 12 acres that have been back in corn. We have 15 acres that is ready for topsoil, it's got all clay on it, and we have 17 acres in the plan for this following year to be 100% reclaimed. And we're, we're asking for, we'd asked for eight years for extension, we'd be willing to take a few less, but we'd like to take a little more time, being as I come in in the last three years and I'm gonna end up being the mining holder, I'm gonna be responsible in reclaiming it all. I have been in the sand and gravel business for about six years, I have a reputation of reclaiming gravel pits that I've mined in and crushed in. I've did Tex Fulton in, up in by Miller. Dave Hanson over in Minnehaw County on Highway 19, I made all the gravel for that, and we reclaimed that pit. Marv Post up in Brookings, two years ago, I did a job for him and reclaimed it all. I reclaimed a pit for Brookings County, and Jason Fisher down in Yankton, I did a job for him two years ago, and it's 100% reclaimed. I also have Great Bear Sand and Gravel, I have two pits inside the city limits of Sioux Falls, and one is on Rice and Cleveland, and then that was 140 acre pit that was made by Concrete Materials, and I reclaimed over 100 acres, 120 acres to 140 acres. So I mean, if you extend this permit, this pit will get reclaimed and be done right, so it's reusable then.
Okay, questions for the petitioner?
I, I just will make a comment, you'll see, I did, if he recently fixed the roads, I, I just took the pictures on October 6th. It was three weeks ago, so he.
And we fixed the road the last two weeks when our crews got available this fall to finish. And I mean, it's, we'll make sure the road stays in deal. And keep in mind, fif, almost, I would say, one-third of the road is shared with that cement plant now that hauls, and they haul with trucks every day too.
Okay, so my question would be then, why does someone have to contact the county for you to fix the road?
They didn't, only did first time when I took it over, the rest of the years, I fixed it on my own. Prior, some of these complaints were prior to 2013, and I wasn't taking care of the pit. Okay?
That's correct.
When a change, a pit changes ownership, the conditional use just goes with it automatically, isn't like our other conditional uses that change of ownerships, you have to go back through and do it again?
They didn't, they didn't change the ownership, they changed the operator that was taking care of the pit. The Gustafson Reynolds still own it.
They still own it.
They own it, and then, but I took over the mining permit, because that's what we do, and I have crushing equipment and stuff too, so we took over the mining permit. And under the mining permit, we're bonded that we have to have everything reclaimed. And by taking over this pit for them, the guy that goes broke, I, I get stuck reclaiming all his too.
He was an operator, not the owner?
He was operator, not the owner. Or the owner have to take care of it, but when I applied for the mining, I took the responsibility of taking care of the rest of the pit. And it's gonna take a little bit to reclaim it all, because it's, it's not the way it should have been done, but we've got a, a system going now that every time we take gravel out, we're reclaiming right behind us as we go.
Okay, great. No questions for the petitioner, we may have you come back later.
Okay.
So, okay, anyone in the audience care to address this issue?
Well, just a couple of brief comments. My name is Wayne Gustafson, and I presently live in Rapid City. After living in Sioux Falls for 55 years, I moved to Rapid City a few years ago because of business reasons. Yeah, there has been some complications with, with the pit, and primarily, they came about because originally we had made a mining agreement with Dakota Earthworks, and the principal in charge of the mining for that company was taken with cancer, and it was very, very difficult to work with him. He didn't mine it in the way we wanted, and the areas that we wanted, and didn't reclaim it the way we wanted. So at that point in time, we ceased operations with him, and now are with Great Bear, and they've done a much better job for us, and we hope that you will permit them to continue and, and go ahead with it. We have done some reclaiming, and actually, our tenant farmer has farmed some of that. He has said that he isn't getting quite the yield out of what he's farmed now, but that takes a period of years until he can get back to the original yield, but he is happy with the way these people are, are doing the reclaiming and working in the pit, and the previous gentleman who mined it just went all over in the pit area and, and did kind of what he wanted to do, even if we told him different, so that's why we had to cease, and it probably wasn't taken care of as should have been, and probably he didn't take care of the road either quite as he should have been. But we are really happy with our new operator, and we'll hope that you would permit him to continue, and we will try to make the conditions right, and I think we've lived up, there were like 15, 20 conditions or so forth, and with the exception of the road, I think we've lived up to all of them, and the, the dust problems that were noted here were when the other individual was operating the permit, and there hasn't been any major ones that I know about since that point in time, and I, I guess that would be my comments on it.
Any questions for Mr. Gustafson?
Just a quick one. So, Mr. Gustafson, was there a gap in operating there when the one party was going through illness and stuff? Did you cease operations in the pit?
Well, I, when you say a gap, there might have been a period of six months or so, but not, not a period of a year until we found a new operator to do it and try to put it back into some semblance of an orderly mining operation.
Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, thank you, Mr. Gustafson. Okay, anyone else in this care to comment on this issue? Please come forward, state your name and address.
Lance Lundee, 26106 467th Avenue, straight up the hill from the pit. I know there's a few of us that do.
You can point that out, Scott, on your place, before you.
You got better photos than I do, I need some of these photos of my house.
I think he lives over.
On the east side?
Songbird Acres.
Songbird Acres, okay, there you go.
Right on, corner of 467th and Dorothy. I might go a little further north, but that's close enough. I got the hill in front of me, so I really don't see a lot what goes down in the pit. And I remember the meeting 10 years ago, I was here, okay? One of the things, you know, the, the monitoring, the air quality monitoring, I understand that. As far as the recreational and, and people using the area, no, probably no decrease there. I guess the biggest thing I know, you say the dust down there, you never noticed it. While I live out there, I do see it, a lot of it's, may not caused by the pit, a lot of it's caused by the trucks, and I get it. I live there, I expect that, I know we need, you know, to further the economy and, and the gravel to extract it, I got it. I guess the biggest change was when I noticed, I went up to my gutters and I had to take them out and check them out a couple years back when we got hail damage, I noticed about two inches thick of dust in my gutters. And I cleaned them out in 1999. That's a lot of dust. That's a lot of dust. I replaced my siding. Yeah, there's dust everywhere. I gotta, I gotta pressure wash my deck, which is normal for most homeowners. I do it every year. But the dirt that comes off there and the dust, it's just, it's phenomenal, okay? Now, I'm not saying it's causing health hazards with my family, it hasn't. I can still go run on the, you know, drive a road if I want. But it does get a little annoying. Yes, I do hear them during the day. I'm home on weekdays. And I think the biggest thing for me is, is whoever's operating the pits, whether it be the one south of me where they just tore up a whole mile, which I just, I was surprised by. And I did see them fixing the roads, so appreciate that. I don't live on four-sixty-six, but I go by there about every day, okay? So there are some concerns. The other concern I was wondering about was accidents. How many accidents have happened at four-sixty-six and two, or four-sixty-six and thirty-eight? Because I told the commission at that time, there's gonna be accidents. They said, well, they're gonna happen. And I get it. But when it's caused by trucks pulling out there slowly, plus now, you have Zacharias pit. Now, they got a big old sign out there saying, trucks coming out slowly, got it, okay? But you have drivers that are distracted and I get it, that's gonna happen too. But when you come out and the truck's doing five miles per hour and you're doing sixty-five or seventy going down that road, not that I speed, but it does happen. So, it's gonna happen. So I'd like to see how many accidents have been reported on that road with that happening as well. And then I know the drivers are safe, they're just doing their job. I get it. But you can't be responsible for all the public either. But still, I mean, that should be examined in there too. Because I was on one of the first accidents there, which happened to be a, a friend of mine on the fire department. So that's the take in fact. It wasn't, they weren't seriously injured. It was just, you know, fender bender basically, but still, it's gonna happen. And I never, I never did, I tried to get an accident report before I got here, but it was too short a time, too busy to do it. So, with the air quality sample, I, I'd like to see something about it, but I, you know, like you said, it's too expensive, so I guess that's not gonna happen. If they go with the conditional use permit, how long is that for? What does conditional use mean? I get it, they're reclaiming the property, I appreciate them doing that. Um, other things that I don't see, nature that I used to see when I was out there, but that's gonna happen, they'll come back, I get it, so will the crops.
The road on the west side of your place would be a gravel road, wouldn't it, as well?
Yes, yes, that's there. That's why I say, I get the trucks up and down, they're pulling their Jake brakes coming up. And that was another thing, speed limit signs down out there, they don't have one. Most of the truckers are pretty good about it, but every now and then, I've gotten out and videotaped them. They're probably doing forty-five, forty coming over the second hill. And you got kids on that property. Now, it isn't from that pit, so that has really nothing to do with the pit, but it would help somewhat. You know, if they, if they wanna go eight years, I, I could see, you know, four or five, but where does lack of preparedness of the original owner of that or the owner of that come into me having to, you know, tolerate it more for another eight years, which I've done already. So, that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Lundie. Okay, anyone else care to address this issue, please? State your name and address, please.
Derek Erickson, um, two-six-one-four-seven, four-hundred-sixty-sixth Avenue. And yes, they have come and-
Where do you live then, Eric, for sure?
Two-six-one-four-seven.
It always helps if you can, if Scott can point it out on the map.
Kinda underneath where it says property.
Oh, okay.
You got me blocked out. Yep, I'm on four-sixty-six.
Okay.
Yeah. Anyway, they have come and fixed the asphalt, if you wanna call it fixed the asphalt. They dug it down, threw some gravel in, threw a six inch patch in. It's rougher now than it was when it was alligator. I'd rather drove on it broken up than the patches they put on it, unless they wanna come in and put an overlay on it and make it like it should be. The next thing I guess I would have to say is, they do stuff when they're forced to do stuff. They don't do anything in that conditional use permit unless we call. And we call. And we ride Hartford Township. And we go to the Benton Township meetings that I don't even live in Benton Township. Wall Lake gives permission to drive up and down the road. Their, their, they end at two-sixty-two, which is a dead mile. From two-sixty-two to two-sixty-one, it's Hartford Township maintains that with Benton Township. But Hartford Township's the one that moves the snow, takes care of it, and the last little bit of the asphalt. It is a constant battle. We have no trucks that can come off of two-sixty-one at the exit of their pit. No trucks can go south. We are, we're a no-haul road. I call them all the time. What are you guys doing on my road? You've gone by thirteen times. Nope, it's not us. Check your GPS. Well, they were new drivers, they didn't know. Well, that's not my problem. You hire them, you tell them, when you go out, you go north. It's just a constant battle. If you do allow this to keep going, they should have to do what's on the conditional use permit without being ridden constantly. My spare time is worth way more doing other things with grandkids than it is trying to make phone calls, getting people to do what they're supposed to do on their own. And I do believe that you've had more than two people mining. It hasn't been just um, the previous, the original person and now you? There's been other miners in there? One other miner?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. Because I've never seen mining ever cease for six weeks, let alone six months.
Oh, it's closed all winter.
You haul out of there. You might not, you might not mine making gravel, but the pit's open.
Not all winter.
I've never seen it not, trucks not go out of there. Maybe a week, maybe three, four days.
Could you please address this way, please, Eric? And then if you have any questions later when he comes up, we'll address them. Anything else?
Um, no, I, in my recommendation, the best thing you could do is tell them they're done. Reclaim it. It was nice having you for neighbors for the last ten years and call it good. And I'm pretty sure there's a lot of other people that feel the same way. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wanna address this, please? State your name and address, please, for us.
Celia Benson at twenty-six-one-thirty-two South Robin Drive. So if you go into the Songbird Edition and you go to the very end of Robin Drive up against Van Hurdy's Corn, that's us. Correct, right, right at the very end of that uh, street. Uh, we have lived in that uh, home for six years so that we weren't here at the time that the first conditional use permit uh, was made. I wanna thank Scott Anderson for going, listing that there were the nineteen conditions, because one of my comments is, as I had come up to the office and read through those uh, lists of stipulations, we mentioned the hours of operation, the use of four-sixty-six, the tarping of loads, and then this asphalt road. And, and much of the discussion tonight has been about the condition of that asphalt road. Uh, but what I'm seeing or hearing, when I, I've talked to about twenty of the neighbors, I spent the weekend going around and since it was such a nice weekend, people were out working in their yards, so I talked to them. Uh, and what I'm hearing is that we have a pattern of non-compliance in hours of operation. Instead of ceasing at six, they're going beyond six. And again, as Mr. Erickson stated, when they are called upon it, then they have reasons and they have all kinds of excuses. Uh, but they don't do anything about it unless someone physically goes down or, or calls them on it. Uh, the use of four-sixty-six, I wasn't clear and I'm still not clear why they cannot go south on that gravel road. But evidently, they are not to do that. They are to take that quarter mile on the asphalt and get onto Highway thirty-eight, or evidently to go west.
The local people call that the roller coaster road.
That's what I'm hearing. And I have, and, and I'm, I wanna talk about public safety in a moment. But uh, again, when, when you have someone, you see the pattern of non-compliance. It is this sense of, well, uh, we may have agreed to those stipulations, but we will adhere to them when we feel like it or when it's at our convenience, not when, not all the time. Uh, so that, and then again, that was where they had to be uh, called to account. I understand there's supposed to be a, a stipulation on tarping of loads and I understand that that's not being adhered to. So, there's, there's the pattern of non-compliance. But I wanted to, uh, was appreciative that Mr. Anderson uh, pointed out number six, health, safety, and general welfare. And there was a request or a question about the number of accidents. And I did go to the county sheriff's department and I did ask them to pull the number of accidents at four-sixty-six and Highway thirty-eight. And on uh, June seventeenth of this year, there was one accident at that intersection. And at February thirteenth of this year, there was one accident at that intersection. So, since February thirteenth of two thousand sixteen, you've had two accidents at that intersection. The other thing I wanted to comment on was about the sparse population. And that may be in terms of economic development and growth. But if you look at the increasing enrollment at West Central uh, school, if you look at the increasing enrollment at Tri Valley, and if you know the um, boundaries of those school districts, West Central goes all the way down uh, into Wall Lake Township, into Ellis. Tri Valley goes all the way down to Forty-first Street. So you've got school buses that are going on Highway thirty-eight, both up to the Colton Road to go to Tri Valley and to go into West Central. And then those buses are coming home at three-thirty during the time that people are hauling gravel theoretically. So there you have uh, you may have sparse population around the pit, but you have growth in the area. The city of Hartford is growing, so you've got an increasing enrollment in the schools. So you've got public safety, which was addressed as far as the big trucks coming out of that uh, four-sixty-six and going, especially if they're going to the right up the Skunk Creek Hill. The other thing that has happened since the uh, um, approval of the permit was, we now have a Walmart up in that area and we have the community center. And particularly in Walmart, you have much more traffic again on Highway thirty-eight. They're not using the interstate, they're using Highway thirty-eight to come to Walmart from Chester, Colton, Madison, Salem, Montrose. So you've got that increased traffic on that road. And when you come around past Zacharias's and come around that curve, if you are going sixty-five, you don't have good visibility. And so it is hard to see um, trucks pulling out from there. And you have, that's also where you have the exit ramp and the exit ramp off of I-ninety, so you have some congestion there. I thank you for uh, my opportunity to give my comments.
Great, thank you. Anyone else care to address this issue, please? Seeing none?
I think there's more.
Who, who got another one? Okay. State your name and address, please.
Rhonda Erickson, um, two-six-one-four-seven, four-hundred-sixty-sixth Avenue. My husband Derek just spoke a minute ago. Four-sixty-six isn't a very wide road. I think you're familiar with it when you were talking, um, roller coaster road. So when you're meeting two vehicles, you literally have a foot between the two vehicles where there's really no way to get around it, otherwise you hit soft ground. So it was never made for heavy vehicles, you know, especially trucks. Um, farm equipment, I think we're, we all have that on our radar when it comes to that time of year and stuff. And we don't see as much traffic to that and it's usually two days, it's gone. Um, today, when I was on Highway thirty-eight, I am turning to go south on four-sixty-six. And I can see a dust, and it wasn't horrible today, but what I'm noticing, and it's nothing that they can probably control, they have businesses coming all over picking up gravel. It's like a drive-through for them. And this truck didn't stop. I mean, he just pulls out onto four-sixty-six. I'm right there and he swings out into the whole road so that he can make the curve or the turn to go onto Highway thirty-eight. So, and this is happening all the time. Um, another instance, um, often when someone is pulling out on Highway or on four-sixty-six to go on Highway thirty-eight, I'm turning to go to four-sixty-six. We have another dump truck coming to turn that direction too. For some reason, on that section of Highway thirty-eight, it needed a turn lane. It was never put there. I mean, it could save lives at some point to have that there. Um, that corner is just not conditioned for all this traffic that's happening. Um, we know for sure we have two school buses that three through, about four-thirty, I think it is, they both come down Highway or uh, four-sixty-six. You know, they're traveling that roller coaster road and then they're hitting the truck traffic, all the other traffic too. I guess my point is that it really just needs to be addressed, the traffic pattern and how much is hitting that corner. Chemcast, they're really not, they were, they're half the distance on that paved road. The other half, again, is, is the other traffic hitting with um, the, the trucks and stuff. But anyway, um, I just, safety, I'm a mom, I warn my kids when they're coming home, watch for the trucks. You know, they are in a hurry, they're not stopping on that corner before they go onto four-sixty-six, just be careful. And we've had enough accidents there. I mean, it's, it's bone chilling when you hear that noise and you hear the dust and stuff and you know there's been an accident. So I just, if you guys could help us make it safe too, so.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Ma'am, could I ask you a question? Um, so when you talk about having a turn lane, do you mean on thirty-eight, like to accelerate for the trucks to gain a little speed before they merge into traffic?
No, for us to turn, even like the safety, for us to turn onto that or just have it identified as we're turning and the trucks are turning into there, whatever, to make it safer. I mean, it would be nice to have a turn lane.
Four-sixty-six should be wider also, is what you're-
Absolutely. You know, um, I guess I would just beg you guys to drive that road once, just to see how dangerous it is. Um, we've always known it was bad. It's, it's, you know, we try to prevent cars from going fast by stopping or calling, you know, that type of thing. But it, it's a dangerous road. It's horrible. I mean, we've had, I don't know, three accidents this spring, I guess, this summer, you know, that we've had to address and, and some of them have been hospitalized. But it's just a bad road and um, just not a very safe environment for drivers, so.
Any questions?
No, um, do the cement trucks take this road also?
They, they do, but very small section. So the, the Chemcast, if you're looking on Highway thirty-eight there and where they're located, they're, they're probably, I mean, I don't even know if it's- Yeah, not, yeah, maybe, not even that, maybe, and stuff, but I would say three-fourths of it is actually just the traffic, you know, from the dump trucks and the local traffic, but they're-
Cement trucks do use it.
They do, and they go straight north and they go out onto Highway thirty-eight.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, we'll have you, let's have everybody else and then we'll have you come back, please. Yes.
Gary Meyer, two-six-one-five-four, four-hundred-sixty-sixth Avenue. And your question to Chemcast, they do use that road. I've seen eighteen-wheelers haul culverts past it. A lot of utility vehicles from Chemcast use it and I'm sure the employees use it. I see a lot of traffic that goes in and out of Chemcast. And just a comment, when the original permit was let out back in two thousand and six, I had quite uh, lengthy discussions with Tommy Reynolds and his attorney. And they agreed that they would take full responsibility for that road. In the wintertime, they would salt it, they would blade it. In the summertime, they would fix it. And so I don't know how much the township has taken over, but that was part of the agreement at that time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else care to address anything new or different? Go ahead, please. Yes, come, come forward, please, state your name and address. Address, please.
Wayne Mater, forty-six-seven-one-six, Meadowlock Lane. I've just taken that road randomly when I go to a buddy's and tea. And I just took it, I thought it was about two weeks ago, maybe it was three. But I thought, I'm not driving this road anymore. And I drive seventy-five miles to work every day and it's one of the worst roads I'd seen. So I'd rather take gravel, you know, and I take gravel halfway to tea, to his place. But that road was atrocious, it wasn't safe. And jumping out on thirty-eight, I just, seems like there's a pattern of the behavior. If they really were gonna fix the road, I think they could have done it before that. Because I took it a couple of times last winter and I took it the year before. The road was a mess then too. Now all of a sudden, the county meeting's coming up, well, we better fix it quick, so.
All right, thank you. Okay, any more? Otherwise, we'll have the petitioner come back up and answer a few questions, please. One quick question, go ahead, please, then we're gonna have the petitioner come back.
Can you maybe say my name again?
No, that's fine. You're Lance Lundie.
Thanks. Um, are you, uh, I don't know how close they go to Skunk Creek or if they're planning on going over either. That was a question I had. If they're gonna keep going east or if it's just for going south.
That's a question we'll have to ask them.
That's, thank you.
Okay, come forward, please.
Right now with the expansion, we want, we were not gonna uh, take out any more out of farm and the mining we're doing is underneath the clay piles, we're putting back in the reclaimed area. So the piles were stacked on top of the gravel areas that, where all the piles are. Those are the piles we're reclaiming the pit with and then we're mining the part underneath where the gravel piles are. Until we had the part, pit almost ninety percent reclaimable before we'd go into any other areas. And that's uh, Wayne and them guys asked me if we could do it that way and we've done it the last two years that way and it's working- way, and it's working well. Our trucks, well, I own first-rate excavate, Great Bear Sand Gravel does not own trucks. But I own first-rate excavate, and we help take care of the pit, and I haul out of there a lot. And all our trucks go to Highway thirty-eight. The few times when we came down the county road, we were hauling from a different pit to send casts, and we made arrangements with Wall Lake Township and Hartford Township to bring them trucks down that road to deliver the crushed concrete they needed over. It did not come out of the Reynolds pit we're working in.
Okay, so are first-rate excavation trucks tarp?
Some of them are and some of them aren't.
Okay, shouldn't they all be-
I don't have, I don't have tarps on all my trucks. And for, and my trucks haul over the city of Sioux Falls, but, but I didn't know that when I took over the pit. But all the new trucks I've purchased, I've haul, I get them all with tarps, so.
Okay, let's see here. Yeah, but as far as the road repairs, like I say, those, I can see where people just got repaired this week.
Well, I, I repaired it last fall, the same time. And ninety percent of the breakup happened the last three weeks, because we had the Colton job, and we've hauled fifty thousand ton of material down in the last three weeks. And it broke it up pretty bad. And as soon as we got done with that job, we came in and cut them back out and fixed them back up. And I did it the same time last year. I did it just before winter. I cut all the bad spots out and fixed it. And the time prior to that was, the road was a mess when we took over the deal, and I came and fixed it the best we could.
Any other questions, petitioner, before we close the floor?
I have one more question, Mr. Chair. So how much gravel is left there? I mean, have, have you-
I would say they probably only got two-thirds of the gravel out of the whole pit yet.
Okay.
You gotta keep in mind, you keep in mind-
Is it considered acceptable gravel?
There's that much gravel left there that has not been used up. But keep in mind, when they opened this in two thousand and six, we had recession from two thousand and seven, almost two thousand, two thousand and eleven, and they didn't sell very much material in those years. Because, you know, the housing was way slow, and they just didn't sell that much gravel, because there was nobody buying it. We didn't, I was in the dirt work, and I went through the same thing as the rest of them guys did. So there was a lot of material, years that didn't get a lot of material hauled out. And keep in mind, in the Great Bear sand and gravel, in the last three years, we have paid a hundred and ten thousand dollars just in sales tax to the state. This is not the only pit I have that I run in town. But throughout my pits, that's how many dollars, it's just sale tax that we paid, you know, plus that property tax and stuff that are on the pits we own. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this time we'll close the floor for discussion and action. Oh, the owner one more time. Okay, since you're the owner, go ahead.
Well, I, I just wanted to call to your attention that we didn't just select that road without doing some investigation of it before using it for a haul road. I have a report here from the Department of Transportation that went out there and checked site distances and so forth for using that intersection. And let me just read you a couple paragraphs that they said. The department has concluded the following. The site distances are adequate for eastbound or westbound motorists on State Highway thirty-eight to perceive, react, and either come to a complete stop or make the avoidance maneuver to avoid a collision. The site distances are adequate for motorists stopped on four sixty-sixth Street to properly judge gaps in State Highway thirty-eight traffic. No reported accidents have occurred in the past three years that would indicate motorists are having difficulty at the intersection. So we didn't just randomly go out there. The Department of Transportation did make a study of it, and this was their conclusions.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, when was that study done?
Well, it was done when we applied for the original-
Oh, in two thousand and five?
Two thousand and six.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Okay, I think we'll close the floor at this time. Open for discussion amongst the members, comments.
Mr. Chairman, it's, you know, I can certainly understand why they would want to keep it going. And at the same time, they have had the full term that we originally offered them. And I do remember the issues brought up by the neighbors as far as the traffic and stuff like that. And, you know, I, I think unless there was some drastic overhaul in the traffic, I can't see how we would want to continue that hazardous situation. I, I drive through there myself, coming back from Hartford, and I probably am going close to the speed limit. I don't know what I would do if, if somebody popped out in front of me in a big truck.
Commissioner Ody, what are your thoughts?
I can see everybody's concerns about dust and, you know, just the use of intersection safety issues. But I also realize that they are not the only ones that use that road. If there'd be a way that you could fix it with a cement plan and make it a better road, make it wider, much safer, that would be a big plus. But I can, the neighbors that live there, you know, I know the Bensons, you know, a lot of people have said, well, you moved in there after it was there, so it was there. So you kind of knew what was going on, or you didn't know what was going on, but now you do. So, but you still purchased your property there to live. So I guess I can't, you know, can't feel too sorry for you, but I like your concerns with the situation.
Becky, you have some comments?
May I say something?
No, the floor is closed at this time.
This is, I will just say, this is incredibly difficult. I think that every single neighbor in the community has expressed very, very valid concerns. And it is a new operator, and there's part of me that hates to penalize a new operator for many, many errors that occurred before he was in charge. But at the same time, there was responsibility, I think, from the owner to step in perhaps before they had to go and complain consistently. But I would ask Scott, since two thousand and thirteen, which is my understanding, have complaints decreased?
They have. And the last time we had to do code enforcement on the, on the road was probably four years ago. I think it was in two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, right in that timeframe.
So that indicates to me that even though there was a history before, that there are improvements. But I don't know if the improvements are adequate to, to, to allow another eight years of operation.
Okay. Commissioner Duffy, what are your thoughts?
Well, I, I'm always open to listening to what the public has to say, especially when I don't live in the area. I am concerned about the safety there. I'm concerned about safety anywhere. When you have that many trucks and that many haulers, it just goes with the territory. I understand that there was new ownership here, and I know Harry a little bit, too, because I live in Split Rock Township. I do understand that sometimes you take over something, sometimes you take a, take a lot of the hits that go along with it. But that shouldn't deteriorate on the fact that you also take on a responsibility to make sure that the roadways are responsibly taken care of, especially when you have people. And it goes along also with the haulers as well. I mean, it's just part of the plan when you take over something like that. I have a little concern with going for another eight years, or I'm just a little bit uncertain about that.
Okay. Okay, my thoughts are, I was on this commission when this was done. I've been around here quite a while, believe it or not. But, and at that time, and this isn't the first one we did this to, I think I was the one that made the motion to put the ten year limit in there. Because otherwise, we have what I refer to as perpetual gravel pits. As long as somebody's out there stirring around a little bit, they're gonna continue to use it. And I don't like perpetual gravel pits, because they all have one pit that's their main pit, where they haul in all the old concrete and reprocess it and all that. And that's good. That's what it should be done for. And I, I really appreciate, I appreciate the comments on safety, although it never matters. I might not be sitting here tonight, Monday night, if that car would have hit me going down the church road when I was going to Hartford. He went across the Hartford Road doing sixty miles an hour, fifty yards in front of me. And so I know safety is always an issue. You never know what's gonna happen. And trucks are trucks, and people don't pay attention. But yet, trucks are also important to this area with, you know, the community. I think the eight years is too long, although I wouldn't object to give them a three-year. You've got three years. In and out, you're done, that's it. And, you know, because, you know, that way the new owner isn't penalized totally for all the past transgressions, although they still have some transgressions. He has told us his tarps from first-rate excavating aren't all tarped, and they're supposed to be, if they're using this pit. And, and I don't think it's fair to our planning office to have to go out and enforce this stuff, or the man, Eric back there, to have to call and say, we've got trucks going south. There should be a sign there that says, no trucks.
There isn't.
Okay. And as usual, we know truck drivers, just go and try and hire one nowadays, like trying to hire anybody. You know, the level of competence is somewhat suspect, so. So that would be my thoughts. Like I say, I appreciate the safety concerns, and that was probably the one thing that, when we first approved this, it, it is a township road. You know, it really is. And township roads are township roads that have grain trucks on them once in a while, and that's about it. And now we try to make it something different, and the success of that has been marginal at best. And when I look at that, I'm thinking, that's the only place where there's dust and there's no houses, or would have been dust with no houses, is that little bit of road there. But I know that was a part of appeasing the neighborhood at the time. That was the suggestion. So, but like I say, I would, I would not be in favor of an eight-year thing, but certainly two or three years at the most.
Mr. Chair.
Or just flat out deny it. Yes, Scott?
I just want to point out to the commission and the audience that there's not a condition on here that states that they're, that they have to go north once they leave the pit. They can go either direction on four sixty-six.
You can add that condition.
You could. I'm just telling you, in the conditions of approval, there was never a condition that said they only could make a right hand when they left. So they, they can go south on four sixty-six. That's not included in this conditionally permitted condition. So we're clear.
Okay, good.
Mr. Chairman, I, I also was around at that time. I can't remember if I was elected or just watching the festivities. But I, it seems to me I do remember talk about going north. And again, it's been ten years, which is what, what we signed up for. I think we ought to have some significant upgrades to the infrastructure there before we approve any, any longer usage. You know, obviously, reclamation is one thing, but so are these other, other things. And I think there's an opportunity to call for some infrastructure improvement before we at least have some proposed, before we decide permanently. I think it could, Scott, if, if we were to reject it, either side could appeal it, right?
Or if you approve it, either side could appeal it.
Yeah. Well, I, I guess my, my hope would be that if we did decide to have it continue, that we would have an improved traffic pattern and roadway.
But the state, just to clarify, the state highway is not going to put in a turn lane there. We, you can request that there.
That's true. We, we had that with one fifteen going north and Renner Corner.
And they're gonna tell you there's not enough traffic. They, they will not-
That fast, yeah.
So what is your wishes, commission? These are always the difficult ones, but that's what we set up here for.
Um, Mr. Chair, I have a question, and this is either for Scott or for the applicant. Would, would it be actually better to have that road gravel and watered to control dust?
Well, you know, there's benefits. We went, because we had a lot of discussion, and just for the planning commissioners that weren't here ten years ago, it was not, that, that condition about the paving was added at the county commission when it was appealed. So there was, there wasn't a lot of discussion about how that road, if it was to be paved, how it would be paved, how wide the pavement would be. There was just a condition added, basically, literally at the twelfth hour, that the road's gonna be paved from the haul road up to Highway thirty-eight. That being said, now I forgot where your question was.
Is gravel better with, you know, with dust control better than paved?
The problem is you get wa, it gets washboardy. I mean, that's, the benefit of, of the pavement is it doesn't get washboardy if it's maintained, you have, and there's no dust. So you have two real good benefits. The downside is, it takes a lot more maintenance. And, and the township, when I, when I met with them, this was continued several times, I went to the Hartford Township meeting, and, you know, their concern about maintaining this was that they're not really equipped to maintain pavement. And that's where Mr. Erickson, or no- Meyer. Mr. Meyer, when we talked about how this was gonna be maintained, that was sort of that conversation that came up with the owners on how it was going to be maintained. Because the township was really sweating it about, well, we don't have the equipment to, to blades to, you know, maintain it properly. So that was-
Or sand it in the winter.
Or sand it in the winter. They didn't have Sanders. Do you remember this, Commissioner Cypher, we had this discussion about, we don't have Sanders, and we don't have the equipment to fill potholes, because if you pave it, then there's potholes.
I have another question then for, for Scott. So then, since this condition was added at the last hour, was, is the road there built to the standards that we now require? I, I wasn't on the commission then either.
There was no standard set. It just said it had to be paved.
It's all set.
It's all set. It didn't say how wide, it didn't say how, how, how deep the asphalt needed to be.
Like we do now on anything that we require paving.
Yeah. I mean, ideally, if we were going to require them to pave it, we should have said, you, you paved it to twenty-four feet wide with, you know, a two-foot shoulder, and that there had to be, you know, six inches of base course and four inches of, of, of asphalt, and then, I mean-
Like we do now.
Yeah, like we would require a subdivision road, but it, it was never that, the way the condition was added was just, it had to be paved.
Okay, so do I hear a, a motion or any other discussion?
You're just gonna keep us on task, aren't you?
Yes, we are. That's what we're here for.
Mr. Chairman, you know-
There's a very strong chance this will be appealed, and I always look at it this way. If something is highly likely to be appealed, well, that's fine. But what's the best situation if it should be approved?
Mr. Chairman, I think obviously there's some opportunity that some of these problems could be solved at this level before sending it to the regular commission. And I wonder, even though it would be, you know, exceeding the ten-year limit, if we were to, you know, have an extension of a couple of months into next year, that if the owner and operator might be able to come to us with some plan that might alleviate some of the concerns that the neighbors have. I don't know if that's possible or not. But potentially, you know, a wider road, better asphalting, better base to it or something, and additional traffic control. We could check with the sheriff about those accidents, et cetera. I think dust is another issue, but dust happens in the country a lot. I, I just wonder if we shouldn't, you know, if you'd permit me, I guess I would ask the, the owner and operator if they have any thought that they might be able to propose different.
Okay, let him briefly answer that.
Fellas, owner and operator, is there something that you might be able to work on that would blunt some of the issues that, that your neighbors have concerns with? The, the traffic, the danger, the width of the road, these kinds of things? Is there, can you, can you think of ways to work with them to solve some of the problems?
Well, you have to step up there and see if they, please.
Yeah, there's a couple things we can do on the dust. Is I could get, like, Bumblebee to do calcium in the summertime a couple times.
You do that on your haul road now?
On my haul, now, we water it if there's a lot of trucks. On my haul, now we water it if there's a lot of trucks, and I calcium it one year. And then, the year I calcium was, the year was so dry because we weren't getting any rain at all, so I had them come and put calcium chloride. I could do that every year, and if I do it several times a year, we can keep the dust on that road down to the very minimal.
Would it have to be the decision of the township to widen that road?
I have no idea.
I have no idea either.
It would.
Township supervisor here.
It would. It's their jurisdiction.
And you know, the issue that you have, it's too late now to put any more base coat. I mean, you're at the base course under there. You have to rip up the entire road, and that's not really practical either.
Right. And, and if we'd put a four-inch mat of asphalt on, we'd have to have at least eight years of mining because we wouldn't get enough money revenue to even, out of the pit, to try to pay for a four-inch mat of asphalt on a mile of gravel road, you know? You see, I, when I took over the pit, the, the road was in pretty bad shape, and it wasn't built with a lot of asphalt because they didn't have no standard on how to build it. And the reason they didn't put a standard on it, probably because if they would have put a standard on it, it had to be to a certain spec, well, then they would have made the county take over the road, or the county would have had to take to maintain the road. If you build the road to spec, then it will become a responsibility of the county or the township or whoever did it would have to take the responsibility for the full road. Now we got the road as asphalt, and it's not very good asphalt, and we have two businesses on the road. So, I mean, we'd do, as far as dust and, and the, the mine operation has put the signs up so the trucks don't go south, and they say, no dump trucks. So that eliminates any semi-tractors hauling farm equipment or whatever are still going to go up and down that road.
So we, we need a call for action.
Well, I think then at this point, I would, I would make a motion to deny the extension and let it be appealed.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny the conditional use permit sixteen seventy-one. All those in favor of the denial signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion is denied. New business.
Can I ask you a question here?
Yes.
Is it possible to reconsider if we would get together with the township and so?
That would be between now and the county commission meeting. I would do that.
That would be exactly what you should do. The county commission will be reviewing this whole thing.
November twenty-second.
And, you know, they'll be making a fresh decision based on new, new information or old information.
That's if someone appeals this.
If someone appeals it.
If you appeal it, then.
It's not automatic.
Otherwise, it stands.
Either you or they can appeal it, but since it looks like you're the one that it's going against, you should appeal it if you. And you then have a month. That's November twenty-second. That's the date that was on my sheet. Oh, let's see. In the event of an appeal, the decision will refer to the county commission on Tuesday, November twenty-second, two thousand sixteen, at about nine o'clock. And you have to contact the office within five days if you should wish to appeal. Okay, next item. We have new business or old business?
No, old business. Just a reminder about the conference. David can tell you about the dinner.
Twenty-sixth.
Wednesday night, for planner conference.
Welcome to the Dinner Self-Planers Conference. We're going to be discussing, including my colleague from the downtown area. And he's in that partnership. They came down in their conference chair and giving due process, making meeting laws. Getting the presentation for afternoon, so we're down at dinner and for presentations, and after that, we're going to do a study.
We ask you to, please, guys, please be quiet as you leave the room, please. We're still meeting. Excuse me, sorry. You said he is going to talk like open meeting laws and all that stuff?
They, I mean, they revolve around some of that, but mostly around what's happening across the state, according to cases that they're working on, what they can share.
Very zoning.
Zoning and use, and other issues that they've been dealing with in their business, in the private sector. And what they deal with, not really business, cities and counties, mostly counties.
And that dinner's Wednesday evening or Tuesday?
Wednesday. What time?
Five-thirty is the presentation, and then the dinner is at six thirty. Five dollars for, if you want to show up, watch the next plate. These two people signed up so far. Got two people on, yeah.
I'm going to bring my wife too, so.
Fortunately, I'll be over in northeast Iowa that evening, so. But it'd be interesting to hear what they have to say about some of those issues. Anything else?
Our N S N T A is sent out a letter for fencing material on the north side of the property. They received a couple of complaints.
Which one?
It's very Wally Corner, northeast corner.
The fencing area is not adequate because there's residential property that extends all the way around to the north side of the property. So that whole storage area that has the roll-off dumpsters and all the, there's some boats and campers and things back there. Personal items and stuff like that, which is entirely visible from where the house is, because it's straight northeast of where the business is located. There's a big shop building, and so that, there needs to be a fence there. So that's, we sent out a letter, an initial letter again this year. It's a recurring issue. As you recall, this, this issue has brought to you in prior times, so you'll probably be back at the November meeting.
Okay.
If nothing is done between now and.
All right. Do we have ETA on revisions of our ordinances?
I was just going to get to that. We have been working on the revisions, and we have a little presentation to see essentially what you guys want. Between some of the ideas, because, you know, you can move off in many different directions. Whether you copy essentially another area locations, rules, or if they're their own, what would that be? At least that's what I've been up to. I'm guessing David's, I think, of their project has been doing similar type thing.
They're doing a lot of, doing research and looking at what other counties are doing, other areas of the state that are doing a lot of stuff. We're getting to the Missouri River area where there are fisheries. Mostly what they have is set up in open water. So they have ordinances that mostly revolve around that. But other places, they're mostly regional in nature, so there's some similarities in the type of culture there, so.
So do we know yet how many carp in the animal unit? Yes. Is this mainly like for tilapia production, that type of thing?
One of the things we've, we've found was, so the EPA, it's highly regulated by the EPA, human fish and parts. So they have certain standards that they meet. So twenty thousand pounds is kind of the, the lower limit. So anything above that, we go through their equivalent guidelines for what's discharged. So they have to discharge it directly into a, or their wastewater has to be directly discharged. And then there's another, there's other requirements that they need that, and they have to go through those, those guidelines. And they classify between cold water species, which basically have your, that's, and then warm water species, so you have things like.
Well, tilapia would be one of them.
Tilapia is warm water, and then salmon is cold water.
They've been in those buildings, it's like ninety degrees. Zebras, mussels.
Well, we have, I think Kevin has a presentation, but we thought maybe we should wait because Paul has been instrumental in providing this information, and he probably would like to be sort of here then for the presentation.
We'd like him here too.
So.
Make motions and stuff.
So maybe, do you want us to see when his schedule is, if he'll be here? If he's here in November, we'll put it on the agenda for the, for our presentation.
That'd be good.
Okay.
Are we having a, a Christmas party at Kevin's house? Is that what I heard? Yeah. That, yeah, and the other thing we have is commissioner nominees have to be in by when, candidates?
We haven't even posted it yet. We'll, we'll, we will probably start that in November, and it'll go through, it'll go through like December fifteenth. So probably in about a month, it'll stay open. And then we'll close it around the November tenth, fifteenth is normally what we do, and then send it off to the county commission first week in January for someone to get appointed.
Okay. Are there any experienced ones going to?
Bonnie's option.
Yeah, we'll have two, we'll have two, two positions to fill. One Bill Even, who is no longer in state, and Bonnie's position is, or Bonnie's term is up for renewal.
Super. Move adjournment, Mr. Chair.
Move for adjournment in a second.
So move.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carrie's, that's the majority.
I wanted to make one clarification. I didn't give the time I had lived there because I wanted your sympathy. My maiden name is Big, B Y G, so the Odies and the Bigs go back.
Cecil Big. Cecil is what you had.
That's my dad.
Cecil's your dad. Okay.
My dad. And Alvin Johnson, who has the gravel pit, was my son's.